All right, let's go ahead and get started. Uh, welcome to uh this morning's work session. Um, we uh may have a couple of issues. We're gonna start with the Southeast Connector. Uh Scott, I see that you're on. You have anything uh you would like to add as we get started? I'll turn it over to you.
Nope, just both of these topics for this morning, which I appreciate on and off council meeting morning uh that we were able to meet. Uh our updates that uh the council was was asking for, and I think it's appropriate that we spend a little bit of time on these, so I've asked engineering. And we can turn it right over to Steve and his his staff.
Go ahead.
Uh, good morning. Can you hear me? This is uh Tom Block, Deputy City Engineer. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Very good. Um, well, good morning, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is uh Tom Block. I will be giving the presentation today on the update uh for the Southeast Connector project. So we appreciate your time and our in giving us this opportunity to bring you up to date with where we are on this project. It's a very exciting project. We are um uh really looking forward to hopefully uh finalizing this final piece of the Southeast Connector, uh which we believe uh will be a really transformational project for the city of Des Moines. See if I page down here. Get the next, bear with me here a minute. Working. Bear with me as I get this uh. Be able to scroll down. There we go. Um, as far as today's agenda for the presentation, um, we're gonna be covering some project benefits that this project will uh provide the city of Des Moines. Uh, we'll then provide a background um on the project and in the past and where we're going um hopefully here in the near future. Uh, we'll give an overview of the project scope and what this project all entails. We'll then give an update on the design in the in the right of way status. Uh, we'll then give an update on the cost estimate and the most up to date cost where we believe this project will come in um for construction and total project cost. Well, then give an update on our grants and funding and where we stand uh in relation to the financial aspects of the project. We'll then give an update on the schedule and when we are hoping to complete uh this project. And then at the very end, we'll open it up for questions. So why the Southeast Connector? Why is this project such an important uh component for the city of Des Moines? Well, it supports the Des Moines Metropolitan Region's transportation plan, uh the Tomorrow Plan Goal One, which is create a resilient regional economy. Strengthen nodes and corridors and provide multimodal access throughout the region. Um, and also it gives this young boy in the foreground of this photograph, who happens to be one of Steve Neighbors' favorite people in the world, an opportunity to participate in the mayor's annual run and ride every year, and hopefully it will lengthen that 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 route. But that's that boy in the in the foreground there is is uh Steve's son, so we put this up every time we get a chance. Um, as far as project benefits, this is going to enhance system uh connectivity, not only for the roadway system, but also for the trail system in the area. It's gonna, it's gonna make the file connection for the Martin Luther King Junior Parkway out to Highway sixty-five. Um, and it's also going to make connection um a really critical connection for the trail system where it's gonna connect the Martin Luther King Junior Trail with the Gail Lee Wilson uh trail, which is gonna be a critical component to that uh area of the city and Polk County. It's gonna greatly improve transportation capacity uh for this part of the the city and the county. It's going to greatly improve uh the the ability for the movement of goods and people in the area by making that connection um from the east side of the county into downtown and um and then direct access to other major transportation uh system network or components. It's gonna enhance transportation safety. It's gonna reduce some some railroad crossing conflicts that are currently present. It's going to um allow motorists the ability to uh not have to make some railroad crossings. And it's gonna be taking some traffic off of um University and Vendalia and Scott, which we think will um begin to this roadway, it'll be a much safer safer way for them to travel. It's also going to improve an emergency access uh services uh for emergency services um by providing a direct and more efficient route uh into this region. It's also going to improve the area drainage system. As you know, there's in this area, there's been some some uh flooding issues in the past, and this this project will help uh help that drainage system to some degree. And it's also gonna promote economic development um by making this up connection to this major network system. Um, it's gonna provide a lot of opportunity um for either the redevelopment of existing ground or have potentially new types of businesses come in uh to utilize this ground. Again, as far as project benefits, this uh description here or this illustration here, if you see them toward the bottom right, the section in red is the proposed final link um of the Southeast Connector. That that roadway link goes from Southeast thirtieth out to the highways sixty-five. And this project, we are working in conjunction with the city of Pleasant Hill. They have uh just recently opened up um their Pleasant Hill Boulevard project result, which is on the eastern end of this of this project. And we are working with them uh to complete the final link of this Southeast Connector. But as you can see, this this red link and it connected to the the thicker blue link um will provide the connection from US sixty-five on the east side um back towards uh Southeast fourteenth where the where the the yellow X is, that is the location of the 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 transload facility that is being constructed right now. So with that, if we make this connection, um that will provide excellent access for that transload facility um to get goods moved um to sixty-five, and then from there, you know, Highway five over to Interstate thirty-five and or eighty. Um, so that was a, that will be a a major benefit to that facility um and and to other people, other folks who are just trying to travel, even getting to the airport. Going from the east side of the county and the city, e- even to the airport will be greatly benefited from this. Also, as I mentioned before, it provides a critical connection in the central Iowa trail system by connecting the Martin Luther King Junior Trail with the Gail Lee Wilson trail. And this dashed line here shows where that connection is. Um, the green lines are the trail system, the existing trail system uh in the central Iowa uh trails network. This will provide a critical link. As you can see, getting folks from downtown Des Moines over to the east side of the county and up north to the northeast to Pleasant Hill, um Altoona and that region. As far as the project project background is concerned, this uh illustration here in yellow uh shows the section of the Southeast Connector between Southwest Second Southeast fifteenth Street that was completed back in two thousand and fifteen. This next section in yellow shows the connection from taking off from Southeast fifteenth and going out to Southeast thirtieth. And that section was completed in two thousand and sixteen. This photograph here, this aerial photograph here is a view looking east at Southeast thirtieth and MLK Parkway and a Southeast Connector as it is today. This would be the beginning uh um and would be the western end of our proposed project. Uh, so we would connect onto here and then continue to the east. This next photograph is an aerial view looking essentially northeast at the Pleasant Hill Boulevard project that was recently opened um and completed by the city of Pleasant Hill. And this also is another photograph. This one's looking west at the Pleasant Hill Boulevard uh intersection that was recently completed. And if you see there in the essentially the center uh upper portion of the photograph, there is like the the barricades, that is the the location where we would connect our project to uh in relation to this project. As far as our project scope, then, we would then continue on, as I mentioned, from Southeast thirtieth street all the way over to Highway sixty-five. Um, and the portion we would could, we are planning on on building is the portion shown in kind of aqua colored or teal colored and red colored portions uh shown on on this diagram. The red portion is singled out because that is actually gonna be the bridge section of this project. But we would, we are proposing to complete, construct all of this in teal and red, and the portion 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 shown in purple um is the Pleasant Hill Boulevard project that the city of Pleasant Hill just recently opened up. As far as our proposed cross-section, we are looking at um a cross-section shown as shown here on the diagram, which we have uh essentially two lanes. We're looking at with with the type of traffic in the in the truck traffic that we anticipate and lots of uh, you know, the movement of goods and semis, we would be proposing twelve-foot lanes uh for this section with uh a six-foot buffer on on the uh south side and then twelve-foot of green space and then a twelve-foot chair news trail on the south side. We're also proposing um on the north side that we would grade uh and and be prepared for in the event in the future that this roadway ever had the demand rise such that it needed to be expanded, it could be rather easily in the future. So we would, we are proposing that the north side would be graded for future expansion if ever uh needed in the future. This photograph here is just a rendering of what the bridge uh would essentially look like, the bridge section, the one that was shown in red that I just showed here a couple of slides ago, but this just gives you an idea um of what it would look like. Now here, we're showing, we're showing a four-lane build-out. It would only be two-lane bridge uh initially, but this gives you an idea of what what that area would look like with the bridge uh constructed in it. This next slide shows you, gives you an idea of the floodplain that's in the area and how the roadway will be constructed uh to be, you know, uh outside the floodway as as much as possible. But it gives you an idea of the extent of the of the floodplain uh in the project area. So it's quite ex- quite an extensive uh floodplain area. Also, as part of this project, uh we are going to uh realign and improve four thousand feet of the levee system to help um, you know, it will be evenly part of the the overall levee system improvements, the other projects we have going on, but we are going to four thousand feet of realignment um of the levee as part of this project, so that'll be in conjunction and and constructed and be in place at the time that the roadway uh is completed. As far as our uh design and right-of-way status, design is about seventy-five percent complete on this section from Southeast thirtieth uh Highway sixty-five. And as far as right-of-way parcels, we need a total of twenty-four parcels. Our real estate uh division has made offers on all twenty-four. Three offers have been accepted and signed. Two offers have been verbally accepted, and nineteen offers are still in negotiation. The total appraised right-of-way value for the property that we are trying to acquire is three million dollars. Now typically um we would anticipate final cost would probably be higher than that to some degree. To what degree, it's hard to say, but um but the appraised value is three million dollars. As far as the cost estimate for the project, uh the estimated construction cost is uh forty-four million dollars, and that is just for construction only. When you put in all the other components of the project, including engineering, right-of-way acquisition, administration, um construction administration and inspection, estimated total total project cost is at around sixty million dollars. As far as our grants and funding, um committed funds, city funds and proceeds from property sales, um at this point, we believe that we are, we will, we will need about twenty-five point seven million dollars um of of city funds and proceeds from property sales. Um, committed grant funds, uh the city has received through the MPO eleven million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in in grants, STPD grants for fiscal years twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. We are currently in the process of um developing an application for what are called raise funds, those in the past it was the Tiger Funds or Build Grant Funds. Uh, we are in the process of developing an application that is due for some middle next month, and the request that we are looking at right now is around twenty-three million dollars. Now, do need to point out that this is a very competitive funding program. So nothing is guaranteed, although I will say the city, Des Moines, has been extremely successful in the getting these types of grants um in the past, but it doesn't mean that we'll be as successful necessarily in this go-around, but we are hopeful since this will be the final leg of a project that we have been working with the USDOT on in in getting completed in, oh, you know, over the past decade or more. So we are very hopeful, and we think we will, we will put together a solid application, but sometimes you just you just never know with these types of funding programs. But the announcements um are to be coming in November of this year. Uh, I guess one silver lining is if if we are not successful in this year with our timeframe looking at as far as the construction and when the market this project is constructed, we would have time to submit another application next year and still meet our timeline for construction. But also just to point out or as a reminder, um is that seven point nine million dollars of previously secured federal funding was transferred to the city of Pleasant Hill so that they could uh construct their Pleasant Hill Boulevard and Delia Road intersection improvements. That is part of the Southeast Connector uh project corridor in those photographs I had shown uh to you previously. As far as the schedule for this project, um we anticipate we would complete design in twenty twenty-two. We began, as I mentioned before, we've we begun a right-of-way acquisition in twenty twenty-one, and we anticipate that could go into twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are now projecting or anticipating or planning for a a bid in December of twenty twenty-three, and again, that is pending funding that uh raised grant is a key component uh to our to our ability to be in a position to bid at at this time. And then if all goes as planned, then we would, we would look to construct the project twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, again, all pending on funding. And then if you'd like more information, this uh link here, this website, uh the www.seconnector.com is an excellent resource for uh all different kinds of information regarding the project. There's lots of um photographs, and there's some videos, some aerial drone flights on there. I'm just lots of 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 information regarding the product, so if you have not been to this site, I would um I would highly encourage you to do so. And then with that, that is, that is really um all I've got for this morning as far as the presentation, so um we'd be more than happy to open it up for questions.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I I was curious about the raise grant application. Um, you know, one of the things that that I think we've seen is that the Biden administration changed the criteria, so they're looking at things a little bit differently than they have in the past. And my understanding is is that it, the grant favors sort of a different approach than than maybe a project like this fits. Um, could you address that? And then specifically, if that is the case, and and that's why we don't get it this time around, would it still make sense for us to apply for or put forward the exact same proposal a year from now?
Yeah, I guess to to initially answer your question, you you are correct. Uh, Councilman Melibom, and that with the with the Biden administration, the the criteria are they are slightly different. Primarily, they primarily um are very similar, but there are, there are a few more are a couple of of priorities that the Biden administration um has is put forth and what they are, what they are looking for um in these proposals. I'm trying, I don't, I don't have the notice of funding and opportunity in front of me. Um. Oh, yeah. One of them, yes, that's right. One of them was environmental justice, and the other one was climate change. So we will, we will um try to tailor um our application to make sure we highlight our parts of our project that will address those. But but um, but um, the the notice, it's called the Notice of Funding Opportunity, is basically kind of the guidelines, guidance on on what and how they are going to score their proposals and the applications. So so um, we've been through that, read through that, and are trying to tailor our our application like I said, to highlight those those components. Um, and now, I guess to answer your question regarding if we were not successful this year, hopefully we would be able to um, you know, do a little bit of follow-up with with some of the decision-makers or whoever to see where maybe our application had fallen short, and then trying to uh revise uh the next go-around to 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 have a stronger uh a stronger application. I don't know if if Steve or anyone else has anything else they'd like to add, but but hopefully that answers your question.
All right, any other questions? Uh, want to thank you, Tom, for bringing us up to date on this one. Scott, seeing uh no more hands up, should we move on uh to our next subject?
Yeah, we absolutely can. Well, I I think Tom has highlighted the Southeast Connector project and that there is continuous information being added uh on the website, so that if there's a question in the future about some of the details, you can always look there, direct our residents to that to that site as well. So, yeah, we can move on to the second topic, which is a a brief uh opportunity to talk a little bit about fireworks. Uh, there has been some history here clearly on changes in several aspects to fireworks, both the sale of fireworks, which uh I just spoke with a few of our neighborhood services staff, and it appears that the sale locations for fireworks in Des Moines are similar uh to the last couple of years, not seeing an uptick or a reduction really in in that respect. Uh, there are still, as I understand it, a couple of our suburbs that are allowing the uh use of fireworks in their communities. We do not. We can talk a little bit more at the end of the conversation here this morning with Jeff on what options are out there. Uh, very little actually on on changing uh the regulations uh aspect of it. And then uh I wanted to really start us out with what we've seen as far as damage uh due to fireworks in the recent past, and then also talk with Chief Winger about enforcement. Um, we have a document that, hey, I can actually put up if you want, that shows the uh from the fire department what last year looked like uh from a reported damage standpoint. And we can let Chief De Kip kind of talk through what what uh what we saw last year. Do you have that, Kay, or do you want me to put it up?
Well, was the chief gonna share his screen? That's the way I understood it. If not, I can. Were you going to, chief?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can pull it up here.
Okay, you have all the uh accessibility set up for you.
As he's pulling that up, I'd remind Council that not last year, but in years prior to that, we've also had some damage to parks equipment, especially the uh rubberized uh surface that that is underneath some of our equipment. Uh, received some severe burns and had to be replaced, but uh I I think we were fortunate in in the more recent years to not have that same damage, but we're always at risk of that as well. So, chief, I'll get it back to you.
Sure, can you, you, you can see my screen?
Yes, we can see it. Morning, Mayor, Members of Council, John De Kip, Chief of the Fire Department. Um, what you're looking at is uh fire responses that resulted in some action by the Fire Department between June seventh and July seventh of last year. And these are a few, there's a little fewer numbers than the year before, but we took the same snapshot uh the last couple of years. And I think the things that you'll notice on this, about half of these are are kind of an investigation where where there wasn't a lot of action. They, all these calls are pretty much between ten o'clock at night and four o'clock in the morning or so. Um, and the things that we see year to year are um we lose one structure that's a house or something attached to a house or two a year. Last year, we lost one. Um, we see a lot of uh of fires that that could have been something. One of the examples in this list is uh fireworks that had been used in the stairwell of a of an apartment building. Uh, we see those things, people playing with we we um, we predict maybe uh children playing with them in the in the stairwells of their apartment building, that kind of a thing. But you could look at this list and say, well, that's twenty, that's twenty responses in a month. That sounds pretty good. I think the the reality is, we get a few hundred uh complaints to the dispatch center. We can't physically get to all those, even if everybody in the Police and Fire Department probably were assigned to nothing but that. And most of the time, when people have some kind of injury from fireworks, uh we don't find that they report them to us. Uh, they jump in a car and they drive away, sometimes because uh it's younger people who weren't supposed to be doing what they were doing, et cetera. But this is, this is last year's responses. And in talking with the uh Polk County Fire Chiefs about fireworks and dry weather and the grilling season, a lot of us feel, and I would recommend, uh that perhaps the one thing that we we all should do and and kind of do in unison is do some um public messaging that combines healthy and fun behavior messages. You know, because it is, it is gonna be very dry. We'll get some rain this week, but it's gonna be a very dry summer, so our incidents uh of grass fires in general and grass fires caused by fireworks will increase. Um, people will uh use their grills and sometimes dispose of those that debris in the same way that they dispose of fireworks, both both of which cause fires. And kind of the other element is um to talk to our neighbors, because we do find that we get uh fewer complaints of neighbor to neighbor when they when they've discussed something. There, you may have a, a person may have a neighbor who's averse to noise. It may be a a veteran or have pets and things, and when if you can't stop the behavior, maybe you can minimize the behavior by neighbors talking to each other. And so we're, we're wondering if a rising tide kind of message uh may be more effective in general than the specific fireworks message, which becomes very polarizing um and off off the ways to to other kind of confrontation, so obviously, we're, we're always concerned about fireworks. Uh, we we tend to lose someone's home every year. Uh, someone gets, someone gets burned every year, and it's kind of like uh people remember Councilman Coleman's comments about about some types of animals, you know, they um, some bites are worse than others. And so while this is not a lot of fires caused by fireworks, um the 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 fires that they cause tend to tend to be pretty significant. So that's the information that I have. I don't know what questions you have. Uh, we talked a little bit with uh Chief Winger, I don't want to steal his thunder, but also with Al Setka, and working on that messaging. And I also know that the uh the other communities are doing the same, and the state mar- Fire Marshal will be doing something similar uh starting about the the first of July.
Chief, I see Tony's hand up.
All right.
I just wanted to ask about the, is there a ban on burning right now as far and with the dry conditions? Wouldn't that be a reason to not do fireworks? Wouldn't that be a reason to not do fireworks?
Yes, and, and just so all of, all the council members know, in, in state code, there, there's no open burning in the city of Des Moines and about ten other communities. Quick history, about nineteen eighty, the law changed on that and the structure fires in Des Moines were cut in half. They've never gone up. The burn and the burn ban in the county is really us supporting members out in the county. You know, cities like Des Moines and Urbandale, West Des Moines, it's not, it's never legal to, to burn there. But we all agree that since we respond to each other to help out on fires and it's super, super dry, we went for the countywide burn ban that went into effect this morning.
Anybody else, anything for Chief? I think that's a good point, chief. If we have a burn ban, should we have a fireworks ban? For the same reason?
Of course, I would say to the extent that the law allows us to burn, to ban both burning and fireworks, I would say yes. Obviously, there's some challenges there.
Right.
So Mayor, next, I think we're wanting to have Chief Winger talk to us a little bit about what, what the expectations are the next couple of weekends as far as enforcement. Chief? Or at least I thought I saw him on earlier.
Yep. Can, can you hear me, Scott?
Yep, now I can, I can hear you too.
Okay, my apologies, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Members of the Council, Dana Winger, Chief Police. So, yeah, as we move into the, the holiday season here again, first and foremost, the conversation last week with Chief De Kip and Information Director Al Setka and his team. I think the public service announcements are certainly in order. We're dealing with extremely dry conditions. But I think we should, we could probably pair that up, you know, more on a region-wide basis, you know, probably get the county involved as well because everybody's kind of in the same boat here. You know, talk a little bit, we can talk a little bit about the various ordinances that are in place. Also the hazards and, and dangers of not just dry conditions, but also personal injuries and, and things like grass fires and structure fires, which are obviously well documented over the years, but then also the enforcement actions and the penalties associated with that. Once again, you know, our holiday falls on a weekend, you know, which is typically our busiest time. So last year, we had two officers that were designated to respond to the calls for service on the fireworks. Now, we have a priority system for the trips we respond to. And on the fourth of July last year, we responded to eight hundred calls for service that were not fireworks related, that were priority trips. So our officers pretty much ran trip to trip all night long, which by the time you get to a fireworks trip, it's, it's long over. That priority on the fireworks can certainly change depending on the, the conditions and when the caller calls in, if there's a dispute involved or, you know, a fire or an injury. Obviously, that gets bumped up on our response priority, priority system. But running from trip to trip sometimes makes it very difficult for officers to respond to those calls and do the enforcement because unless you observe the act happening, you're going to need a witness in order to issue that citation. Some folks are reluctant, and I completely understand that, are reluctant to be a witness against, you know, a neighbor or, or someone in the area that, that they have to, you know, continue to live by long after the fourth of July. But we understand that as well. Any observed fireworks violations by the police officers, granted, they're not on a, a priority one or two call they can handle. Last year, we had some success. If people calling crime alert, then their identity, you know, is, is never shared with us. So it's very, it's very difficult to do any follow-up. But we had some success last year using our neighborhood associations and sending a flyer out through them that they can post on their websites and say, hey, you know, if, if you have an observed violation and you would like to, you know, partner with us in the prosecution of that, simply reach out to us and we had our NBSD officers do the, do some of that follow-up after the fact. That seemed to work well. But our intent is to put together a flyer, you know, about, about the response, about the violation, about the enforcement activities, push that out not only to the neighborhood associations, but also put it on our website and on our Facebook page and get it to the council as well. So when they receive those calls, they can also simply easily ship that information, you know, right to the constituent and, and they'll know how to go about the, you know, making that initial call or requesting some follow-up. Again, holiday weekend, I would expect that, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be very busy. This is also special event season, so there's, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of street closure type events that we also have to support. Last weekend was one of the first weekends, given the number of events where we had to force overtime, which is something kind of new to us. We hope that doesn't, doesn't become the norm. But there's a lot going on in the city. So those are the neighborhood associations, the, the neighborhood groups and getting the information in their hands is probably our most successful way of doing follow-up. Last year, we polled other cities in the metro area. We also reached out to Cedar Rapids, the Davenport's, the Sioux Cities. Everybody's kind of in that, that same boat of, you know, you can run from trip to trip to trip. The enforcement, you know, at the end of the day becomes minimal unless you have that cooperating partner. So those are the things that, that we have going on. Major Todd Dykstra and his dispatch crew are going to start tracking the calls. We haven't received too many yet. Most of the, most of the information I've gotten on calls at this point have been through, I belong to the Nextdoor app in my neighborhood. So we've had some communication there with some of the neighbors. Chief Tunks and his crew, they will put out the information and a reminder on the enforcement aspect of it. And, but we anticipate a lot of calls. We'll, we'll begin tracking those. I'll send those stats out to, to the mayor, manager and council as, as we go. But last year, just on the fourth of July, we had four hundred and twenty-two fireworks calls in addition to over eight hundred higher priority calls. So it's going to be a very busy time.
Chief, it looks like Connie's hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask only because, well, they've already started in my neighborhood, which I think throughout, throughout the city. But in the city parks, I know they were, there was a lot of damage as they mentioned before. But over by me, there was a sergeant park that was just like, it was like they had the whole neighborhood fireworks, the trash and from fireworks itself. So are we going to patrol our pla, our parks in a greater way?
Yeah, so we have, we have a partnership with Ben Page and his crew already for, for Parks Patrol. Again, that was, we've gotten to the point now where that's, that's forced overtime. So we do have a Parks Patrol. So we will obviously keep, keep tabs on the parks. I know there's, we had after action last year with Ben Page and his crew. And the parks, if there wasn't damage, they were a huge mess. But we will not only patrol them, but the biggest thing is getting hold those neighborhood associations and letting them know that if they see that activity happening, to, to give us a call and at least give us an opportunity to get there while it's happening so we can, we can take care of that enforcement piece.
Well, that was, I think, from the enforcement part. It would be easier because they've got to have been there for a long time for the amount of fireworks that if we, if it's hard to see, it would be an easy place to go to. Because there would be, I would assume, a group of people that you would be able to do more enforcement.
Yep, exactly. And those, those, you know, the, the one-offs, you know, where they, you know, I have ten dollars worth of fireworks and it lasts, you know, a minute and a half, that's probably very difficult to get there. But when they have those larger scale things like that, yeah, we certainly have an opportunity to, to get there and do that enforcement piece. So we, we rely on the neighbors to, you know, when that stuff starts to give us a call and so our folks can get there. But, yeah, we, we, we started down this last week when we got your email, Councilmember Bowden. And then we started our communication center, started tracking the calls.
Thanks.
All right, anybody else? Linda?
Yes, I just liked that I liked the piece where Chief Winger said that he brought a flyer. And I'd really like to see us have something that we can all push out where it says, if you see something and you can, you, you can identify the person and you're willing to be a witness, then we will certainly go ahead and, and prosecute those cases. But I think, I think it's important that we let residents know that they have to step forward and be willing to be a witness. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, if I could, just to have Chief De Kip confirm that with the dry conditions, we're, we're still getting applications for major events that have fireworks attached to them. That, chief, I assume that those will still be able to continue just under more cautious situations as far as we know. And obviously, we've got a couple of weeks of weather to, to get through to that point.
Yeah, actually, consideration of the commercial event permits is, is really not the same as the, the open burning. The open burning would be like Polk County Conservation, taking care of woodland area. A farmer being able to take care of their fields. And so the, the review process is separate.
So I think part of that messaging that we'll put out there is there's plenty of opportunities to take advantage of feeling the commercial fireworks at the events that are sponsored by different communities and, and again, ball games and things of that nature. That should still be pretty widely available for the community, I would think. So Mayor, that's what we had for, for material.
All right. Thank you. Unless anybody has anything else, I think this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep, and thanks to the staff for your input. Appreciate it.